Good evening and welcome to the Town of Act and Selectments meeting for October 1st, 2015. First item on the agenda, salute to the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
Seconded.
All in favor? Approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meetings.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Thank you.
All right, we're ready for your chat when you're ready.
So I'm gonna start by apologizing to Jen and Peter. I know Jen's contacted me a couple of times and we've wanted to get together on updates with fire and rescue. We haven't been able to connect the last couple of days. If it's okay, I'm gonna go over all the other things except for that. My assistant is out. We have essentially closed the office for about a half hour so I can go over some basics. So if you want to give them your update and if there's anything that I need to do, they'll instruct me, but just keep sending me the emails and we should be good.
I have to meet with you tomorrow.
Okay. You need money?
I need somebody with decision-making authority to answer some questions. I don't feel comfortable.
Okay. We can, even afterwards if you want to come into my office. Okay, so the first thing that can't wait, we'll call Mr. Paul up, status of the historical structures, zoning questions. This was, so last week Ken spoke to you all and gave you a recap of the public hearing as he saw it. We also had a couple of emails from Bob Smith, who the planning board chair discussed how the planning board felt about it. We heard Mr. Lenkowski's emails, Mrs. Barrows' emails, so it's kind of back and forth. At the end of the meeting last week, you guys voted to table it when Ken started talking about possibly being another option or possibly going out and getting an appraisal and doing it all under the 50 percent. He's mentioned to you that he was going to reach out to Tom Gore. As of our conversation yesterday, Ken, there had been no callback?
Nothing.
Still nothing, okay. So he's reached out like he said that he would. There's been no follow-up, so when Ken told you guys last week that this wasn't enforceable and the first thing that you'll see in your packet should be the proposed article for town meeting, we decided to have a conference call with Joe. I told you, I think I told Ted yesterday on the phone, that I was kind of surprised that Ken wasn't involved in writing the question with Mr. Lenkowski so that from the beginning they'd be able to make sure it could be enforced. So, long story short, Ken and I had a half-hour, 45-minute conference call with Joe yesterday and kind of went through everything here. And I'm gonna tell you how I believe the conversation ended and where it stands, and Ken, please jump in and correct me because zoning is not my area. He believes that this is an enforceable article and that if it passes, it basically just establishes what a historical structure is and it gives people the opportunity to come before the planning board and have to meet one of the, I think there's five criterias. It'll be up to the planning board to determine if they do or not. So when we talk about the Little Red Schoolhouse, it may or may not fall under that. That's not for anybody to decide except for the planning board when it gets there. So his understanding is that the writing in this proposal is in line with the comp plan and would allow Ken to enforce it if the planning board decides to grant the permit. I mean, that's, you know, a long conversation, that's basically what he told us. You want to add to that?
He was the drafter of the ordinance.
Well, right, and I was-
Every line we have multiple questions with and what if and how about and why, do you go to the planning board or the town meeting? Do you do both? Do you go with one? Do you go with the other? And Joe had opinions on it, which, no, you go one or the other, and none of it says it. It's not very clear. It's a lot of interpretation in there.
Right, well, and then clarification, right, and I guess I was just trying to get at, that's what Joe was telling us. I'm not saying that's what's right or wrong or, you know what I mean? But Joe stands behind his document. Ken and the planning board stand behind the fact that it needs some work. And Bob Smith did send an email saying that he'd like to sit down and kind of work on something. Ken and I had a conversation, you know, is it just one or two items here or there? And he's like, no, it really needs to be, you know, it needs to be started over. You know, because there are some things in here that he believes and the planning board believes are deficiencies. So you have two completely different opinions. The planning board is asking for, you know, you guys to sit down and meet with them and try to work on something happen medium. The chair has not, can't make five o'clock meetings, he's gonna try to be here for six, so possibly if your ordinance meeting doesn't go too long, you know, you can have a conversation with them. But, I mean, but at the end of the day, they just don't, they just don't believe that it's, they just don't support it. But when we called Joe and tried to find out, you know, tell me where in here that Ken wouldn't be able to enforce, we got the opposite, right? I mean, he talked in circles and basically said, this is it, and he can enforce it. So I'm not sure what more we can do or what more, you know, Ken and I can do. Do you have some suggestions, Ken? I mean, short of starting over, I mean, I understand that's what the planning board-
That would be my suggestion. That's the planning board's suggestion. If they were involved, they would draft an ordinance and something more simpler.
But I don't understand why the planning board didn't do this a year ago when this all started, instead of waiting until we're ready to put something, you know, ahead. And now all of a sudden, this is no good and it was written by the town attorney and they want to start from scratch after a whole year of not doing anything about this issue and bringing it to a petition where it was 180-plus people signed it-
Yeah.
-wanting us to do something. And now they're saying, we took it upon ourselves to have the attorney, well, actually, the attorney volunteered to do it on his own and met with the petitioners and came up with this, and he says it's legal and he's a town, and now the planning board is saying, no, it's no good, we want to start all over again. I mean, they should have started this a year ago.
Well, I can't speak for the planning board, but I could say it probably wasn't their priority with the other stuff they had going on. It's an ordinance, you can put it in the book and you can use it. It really looks like it was drafted for one specific issue, one specific property. And if other people try to use this, it's probably not gonna work for them.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so-
Other historical buildings, you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
The thought behind, when, the thought behind the CEO and the planning board looking at it was that they were going to use the map and the index of the historic properties that Mr. Neal actually provided and try to do something from there, make it more, you know, generic for all of them. But, you know, it would take time and, you know, effort to do that. You know, and on the other side of it, because, you know, it's my responsibility to be your liaison, I mean, Mr. Lenkowski did point out, I think, more than once in the conversation that this board, you know, all but told, you know, residents, individuals, that, you know, if they could work something out with the attorney, then you would put it forward to avoid the petitioner. So he did ask me to remind you of that. I'm not saying that, you know, that you-
It has to be something workable.
I, well, see, and so there is another side of that. I mean, because you're right, your code enforcement and planning board still don't think that it can be, well, he doesn't think it can be enforced because there's too many wishy-washy things. I mean, they're, and one of the things that I know Ken and I spoke about yesterday a lot was, so, which appears in the National Register of Historical Places or has been designated an historical structure by a majority vote of the town meeting or by a majority vote of the planning board. So we had that conversation, well, what if I decide I want to go to town meeting? What if Ken decided he wants to go to planning board? If one turns me down, do I get to go to the other? Is it and/or? I mean, who, there were, there are good points in here that the planning board is pointing out, saying, you want to help me clarify that? You know, and even for Ken. So there's stuff on both sides of it, but honestly, the timeframe that we're looking at for October 20th, you know, is certainly not being instructive, but you need to make a decision.
What'd Joe say about that when you brought it up to him?
Ken, what did Joe say about that?
He said it's one or the other.
Yes, I believe that was correct.
So the applicant can choose to go to the planning board or to a town meeting?
He was wishy-washy on whether it was the applicant or the town that directed which way. And that's just one question with one line. And there's several that are the similar questions when you look at it. There, the thought is implementing it for this one use, but we look at it as all the other uses or all the other times it would come up to play, the same as the use would have to remain the same. So we'd have to document what the use was and then from now on enforce that that use never changes, which is, it's crazy. You should be able to do something, historical structure should be used, there should be a use to it. You just don't leave it abandoned because it was abandoned, and how far back do we look at the use? In this particular instance, do we, is it allowed to go back to a schoolhouse? How long do we keep it vacant? There's just, there's a lot of questions with each line.
Yeah, you could turn a historical, you could have a historical building that was a schoolhouse that could be easily made into a-
Flower shop.
A flower shop, a corner convenience store-
Yeah.
-but keeping the historical structure and integrity there.
Yeah.
So-
Yeah, and then this ordinance, you'd have to keep the general appearance the same. You wouldn't be able to increase the size of it, even if you could do an addition on the back, you'd never be able to. It would be a lot of forever keeping track of the one structures or having them through the ordinance versus, I mean, I don't see any reason why you would want to limit them to that.
That's a point.
And where it talks about it has to stay in the original location, is that mandatory or voluntary? What if they wanted to move it? Are we gonna force them to keep it where it is? So, I mean, each line had a couple of questions similar to that that were unresolved.
So last week, the selectman made a motion to table it until this week to get further information, and we kind, you know, we kind of reached out to him and said, what more information, what can we get for you? So he tried reaching Tom Gore in regards to the whole 50 percent. We sat down with Joe, he stands behind it, but, you know, as does the code enforcement and planning board. If you want, you know, in regards to the October 20th, some sort of decision needs to be made tonight.
Because we have to pass it on to warrant and finance.
Right, and, yeah, and that's gonna be our next conversation in regards to the fire and rescue. I mean, if this board of selectmen do not sign this warrant next Thursday, the 8th, you are not having a special town meeting on the 20th. It's that simple. Because eight and seven is 15, so, you know, that's on the 15th, so you couldn't sign it the following Thursday. So, I mean, warrant and finance is waiting patiently for additional items, but, I mean, is this going or not? That's what I need you guys to decide.
Do I hear a motion?
With your pleasure.
Well, I mean, before I make a motion, I guess, maybe we could put it forward and let the town decide. So something would be on the books, but once again, how do you enforce it? I guess it doesn't make sense to put something forward if the planning board and our CEO can't enforce it.
I don't know if not enforcing is the right terminology. It's just cumbersome and questionable and you'd have to make a determination and consecutively stick with that. How many historical buildings are we gonna have that have damage? How often is that gonna happen? May not be very often. I mean, it's been 18 years for this one since I've been here.
Yeah.
Just a lot of emotion is in this ordinance.
Yeah.
And bringing it through town meeting to get it, to keep it where it is, I don't think is consecutively fair for a lot of people in town. For their, you know, it's whether somebody likes the person or not to get it approved.
I mean, I know if we move it forward, then it goes to warrant and finance. Pretty sure I know what warrant and finance is.
Well, but remember, I mean, warrant and finance's job is to either, you know-
Either approve or disapprove.
Right, approve or not, table or not.
Yeah. They're just an advisory committee. This is up to us.
Yeah.
But if we all work together, it makes it work better, but-
And that could be a resolution, but it's not gonna happen.
It's not gonna, yeah, time-wise, we're against it.
I mean, you would be looking at probably June at this point, by the time we get through the November election and school budget, I mean, at that point, you might as well put it on in June.
Yeah. Well, looking at both sides of it, I guess I'm gonna make a motion that we move it forward, let the town decide. I think that's probably the one way to go. So I'll make a motion that we move it forward.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion.
I agree. I think we should put it forward because we said we would.
Yeah.
And if we don't, we're gonna end up having another special town meeting for the petition because they still have that and they can still ask Notary Republic to have a meeting, and that one we know is illegal. This one has some issues, but at least we're putting it to the town to let them decide what they want to do with it, so.
Yeah, I agree.
All in favor? Pass it on to warrant and finance.
Okay. Just gonna skip around here because I'm down to 13 minutes.
Is that all you had on my stuff?
Um, I think so.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Thank you.
Can you calm my line in the hallway? All right, let's skip around real quick. We'll get right back to the fire and rescue MMA action plan, fire rescue.
Yeah.
This kind of came out of nowhere. I'm not gonna say that I've never seen it before. I left you a copy in your box, but this was addressed to me September 25th. It's an action plan, remember, similar to the road commissioners that we followed around for a very long time. This indicates that there are still two things from a proposed completion date of July that he's still waiting for. So you guys also received a copy certified, not gonna bother going through it. Peter's gotten a copy and I trust that he'll be addressing it and we can move forward with it.
Okay, so Peter's gonna take care of this?
Well, Peter's gonna look at it, it's in his box, and we'll get together, but again, it came certified, so you have to-
Okay.
He's probably wondering, what is that? Warrant and finance recommendations, just because you weren't all present, just because I'm gonna make it official, warrant and finance did meet, thank you, and made recommendations on both of the questions. So in regards to the solid waste, they're making a motion to recommend adoption of the solid waste ordinance as drafted. The vote was three in favor, one opposed, and two abstentions. So that is on that one. And then the Article 2, which is the first of the zoning questions, recommend that Article 2 be tabled, meaning to set aside. And then the last one, essentially, I think what we're gonna put on there is they recommend that Article 3 ought not to pass. That's the bold portion of it. He does talk in the paragraph before of a different way that he'd like the moderator to go, but I think that that's what he's looking for, so. I did speak to Larissa about the abstentions thing, we were gonna look into it and look into that moving forward, but it's really, you know, irrelevant on this warrant. Any questions or concerns with the warrant and finance recommendations?
Have you figured out how you're gonna put this on the warrant?
I'm going to copy and paste, was my thought.
It's okay to put it on the way it is?
I mean, recommend, which one?
The table one after what Brad said.
Well, I think that what Brad is saying, I mean, recommend that Article 2 be tabled. I'm not sure that he said it couldn't be tabled, it just said they might as well vote it down. It's the same thing. I mean, that's what Brad told you guys, right?
Right, exactly.
I don't, it's, and I can ask Brad if he wants us to change the wording or if you want that. I mean, what do you want me to do, Ted?
Well, I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, this has never been done before, they're supposed, you know, warrant and finance is always, you know, ought to pass or ought not to pass.
Right.
Is this okay to be put on there? If it is, then we'll put it on, but if it's not, then we shouldn't be putting it on.
I mean, I know that he gave you-
I think we ought to ask the question whether it can be put on that way because Brad made an opinion about being tabled, and what in essence is, they're trying to do is, by using the tabling, is they're saying that they don't even want it to be voted on.
Right.
And it's not their warrant to do that. I mean, if they don't agree with it, then they can say, we don't agree with it, but to not have the town have the opportunity to vote on something the selectman put forward, if it's legal, we'll do it. If it's not, then we shouldn't.
Okay, so-
Larissa, my other question?
Right.
Ironically, that is why we have made that motion. In an attempt to be allowed to vote on question three, it is our interpretation of the main moderator's manual that by tabling the Article 2 and setting it aside, therefore not voting yes or no, we are allowed to proceed to Article 3. The way that the warrant is written, if we say ought not to pass on Article 2, Article 3 immediately becomes passed, and if Article 2 is passed, then Article 3 is immediately made null and void, so-
What he said was if you tabled Article 1, then both the articles are done and both ordinances stay in.
Is this the letter that we received?
It doesn't change anything. It's, I'm sorry.
Is this the letter that we received?
Yes.
Our interpretation of that, and it's gonna be interesting to see how this all plays out, but our interpretation of that is that he said it will have the same general effect, but that is not the same as voting down. Tabling does not allow a vote to have been registered, and so it is not a vote no. I agree that the end game will most likely be, and it is our intention, will be that both remain on the books and that there be a different way to address the issue. So that is our intention, and that is what the ought-to-be-tabled motion is about.
Okay. Thanks.
You guys agree we should get that checked before we put it on the warrant?
I can't.
Yeah, can't hurt, but-
We can't put it on the warrant if it's not right. If it's okay, then we'll do it, but I think it's worth asking the question because it's never been done before.
Yep.
And my interpretation of the meeting with Brad was that it just puts everything out so there's no vote at all and everything stays the same. And the people don't get to choose between the two articles.
And quite honestly, that's what warrant and finance is hoping for.
Yeah, that they both stay on.
Yes.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
Okay.
All right. So special town meeting timeline, I don't want to get too much into fire and rescue because I really need to get it back into the other office, but just gonna, as you meet with them in a few minutes, October 8th is the day that this board has to sign a warrant to get it on September 20th. So as it is, tomorrow, Larissa's gonna get an email saying, you know, please address this one. Tomorrow's Friday. Next week, you know, I mean, that committee's gonna have to meet Monday to, I mean, we're running out of time if you want that on the October 20th because your committee needs to finish it, warrant and finance needs to vote on it and get it back, and you need to sign it by Thursday.
Where are we at?
I know that you guys missed the last meeting, they rescheduled a meeting for October 6th, and if you're finishing the document on October 6th, it's not gonna work.
Not a lot of time.
Not a lot of time. We were hoping-
Can it be put off until a school warrant?
Till-
Yeah, it's not affecting anything.
I mean, the fire and rescue is still up and running.
That's in April.
Yeah, in April.
I've got a number of board members out next week. I don't know if I can pull a quorum. We were not expecting any further ordinances to come to us. We had thought that where we had the solid waste one and the two zoning proposals, that Little Red Schoolhouse and Fire and Rescue may well form their own special town meeting in December or January. We figured special town meetings don't cost all that much money, just hassle and time. And I don't know if I can pull you a quorum for next week.
Then we'll have to go without, then we'll have to go on Little Red Schoolhouse without a recommendation from warrant and finance.
We can talk about that. I'm not sure if that is, I think that the warrant and finance committee warrant article ordinance, rather, passed by town meeting requires a recommendation from us, and we are happy to oblige if we have the people in town. I just, I know that I'm missing two people out of town right now and they are not available next week. We discussed at our meeting on Monday, and we figured where, we knew that you had to sign the warrant article at a certain date, and we are running out of time, that it was likely that Little Red Schoolhouse would join Fire and Rescue in a separate town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm sending, still sending it to her tomorrow.
Yeah.
And I'll just leave with you some information on the, a CROC fest that the Act and Library wants you to put together, a request for time off, sand and salt bid, just wanted you to see the actual bid that went out, possibly you can read it. We decided to create it in-house so that they're filling out the bottom form for us, so we're getting the same thing. Wrapping it up, you have a resignation in your pile under new business, you have the public hearing information that can't start before 6 o'clock, and these are the general assistance minimum if anybody at the public hearing wants to review them.
Okay.
Anything else?
Is it highlighted what's changed or is there some summary?
I gave you guys the two cover, I gave all three of you a cover sheet.
Okay.
That's what needs to actually be signed when all is said and done.
Got it, okay.
Call if needed.
All right, I got everything I need. All right. You wanna fill us in what's going on with warrant and finance?
I mean, sorry, with the fire ordinance.
I don't know about that.
The fire ordinance.
Good evening. So we have had some meetings and taken some steps to move forward. I've had some struggles with the application process, not due to anything that we have any control over, but the website where you apply for the licenses, Main EMS and Main Care, the system went down, they lost our information, they closed the account, had to open it up a couple of times, spent about two and a half hours on the phone yesterday getting half of it done, and the other half I can't complete until I have somebody with authority that can make decisions that'll be on my scope.
Has to be on the phone with you?
Well, it's online, but somebody needs to be there to review it, to make sure the information that is going in is accurate and also to pay the fees. We are working on, we're still waiting for the training for the, I can't think of the name of it, HIPAA, so that the people that are doing the billing and if there's, I need it for right now, and if you do choose to hire somebody who will be handling that, we'll need to have that training. And then we're just working on some other details, trying to do organization stuff.
How involved is the HIPAA?
I think it's very short, my understanding, it's about 40 minutes maybe.
Online course or?
It, no, I believe the chief of EMS can do it and also the billing lady, Tammy Higgins, has offered to do it as well. It's just trying to get people coordinated at the same time. So it's moving forward, but it's been a process.
Appreciate all your hard work.
So I didn't know if you had any other questions about anything.
Not me. No, I'm just, I'm a little concerned and not disappointed, but just not with you, believe me, with the ordinance side of things. I really want to get that on the 20th. I don't know if that's gonna happen.
Is there anybody else? So it was my first time sitting in on the meeting. Is there anybody else that can type? Or, I'm just trying to figure, because it seems like there's a lot of stuff that-
That's the point where we're at. The gentleman that was doing it, I know had some issues back along, not with the committee, just personal-
Right.
-which caused, you know, a delay. I don't know, do you know someone that can really do a good job of typing?
You've got somebody on, you've got somebody on the committee, Dick Neal is great at it.
Yeah, that's the person I'm talking about.
Oh, he's not doing it anymore?
Well, he had some issues-
He's not available.
Yeah, he's not available to keep it up, so.
Okay.
Is that something you might be able to?
Who has the information now? My concern would be, I haven't been at all the meetings-
Right.
-so I don't know the tone and the-
As to where it picks up and moves on from.
Correct, so that's, and I also am just learning terminology and things like that, so that might make it difficult. I'm willing to help out if I can, but I do think that it would be helpful if people were more, if we could maybe be a little more assertive at dates and times trying to get things done, but with everybody's schedules, it's hard when you have volunteers that are trying to do the best they can.
Yeah. Pete, do you know if we have a firmed-up copy of that now? I haven't seen anything since-
I'm not aware of it either.
The meetings ago, so.
No. Last meeting that we did have, I think we were right up to a good point where we think we're gonna be done, just need some housekeeping and cleaning on some typos and issues and put it down on paper so we can review what we discussed. I'm not sure why the meeting didn't happen this last week. I just got an email like everybody else, said it was postponed to the following meeting, which, again, we've been working real diligently, trying to go forward with this, so, again, diligently, try to go forward with this, so, again, we'll do, we'll work late Tuesday night if that's what it takes to try to get it done, so our goal is to hand it in. That's what our goal is.
Okay.
Get it done Tuesday night and have it, yeah, because I think we hashed everything pretty much over the last meeting we had, which I've got a bunch of my notes from, so.
And I think we came up...
Does somebody have the hard copy? Because if I could, if I had a hard copy, I could try to get some of it and then bring my computer and work on it there as we go, um, so I'm...
I think, I'll have to look back on the emails and see what the last copy was we had and see what, what type of email that was. So if we could take that one and move forward with it, that would wrap it up, so. Because I think we really, we really can't do... What can we, what can we do if we don't have that, have that ordinance in place? What does that do, what does that hold up, I guess, is my question?
No, it doesn't hold up the merger and it doesn't hold up the starting up of the fire department because we still have, you have your bylaws and all that that you were going by before, and that's still gonna be the rule of how you operate.
The SOGs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So...
Bylaws and SOGs, now.
Even with the ordinance, and you don't have that kind of stuff written into the ordinance.
No, no, a lot of it, a lot of it says, "See SOGs."
Yeah, so, so you already have those and those have already been accepted, so you can, you can up and run, and there's no reason why we can't have another special town meeting. We don't have to wait till April, but if there's no, yeah, I mean, if there's no requirement that has to be in place for you to get going, you know, as the town ambulance and everything, then there's no reason.
She just came and asked for a copy of that and is gonna come back in here. You've already seen it, but I want you to have a copy in front of you.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Well, we just try diligently to have it done.
I agree.
Tuesday night, and I just don't wanna leave anything else hanging out there, you know, it's, get it wrapped up, so.
We're struggling with everything else. Let's try to get something and keep going forward.
Yeah, okay.
Um, just wanted to mention, I did, I just received this, as Jenin mentioned about the Maine Municipal Association issues that they had.
They didn't send you a copy when he did the report?
They did.
Oh.
They sent me a copy way back when, and it was two issues, and two very simple issues, and both of them were addressed within a week.
Okay.
I'm not sure what, what the issue is.
Is there, i- is there anything that you could pass on to prove to him? Because Lance is, is very, he, he sticks with his stuff until he has a piece of paper.
I know him very well.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you dealt with it. So unless he has a piece of paper in his file, he keeps, he keeps coming after us. So if you could just send him something you could put in his file, then he'll, he'll be fine with it, I mean...
And just so you know, the two simple things was just the annual driver's license checks. Those were done. We have to do them every year, and the policy development for the inactive status, and we worked on that. You approved it and we enacted it already. That's the only, the two things, and they were done way back when, so.
Okay.
I'll get something in right into him to make him feel much better, and he can file it away.
Alright.
The only thing, thing I got a minute is I just wanted to speak on a call. We had a call, fire call, this Sunday. Worked out top-notch having the station staffed again because it was a wood fire out of control, and because we were staffed, an immediate response happened. We saved two buildings. If we had to wait for the initial ten-minute response to get up to the station, we would have lost partially two more buildings down on Thirteenth Street Avenue F. So it worked out really good, saved two buildings. The, the ownerships down there were ecstatic on what had happened. The, the two guys that are on duty rolled right down there real quick, knocked the right flank, right flank down, knocked the left flank down, still burning up, burning away, but we saved the buildings. That's what mattered. We had eight of our people finally show up, six from Shapley show up, and there's still a lot of hands-on work because wood fires are, you know, are busy work, so kudos to the crew that saved the two buildings.
Congratulations, that's great.
That's good, yep. Um, while I think of it, Dick, do you have a copy of the last ordinance for the fire rescue, where we at to date, or prior to the last meeting? No, 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 could you, could you email that out tonight by chance? Okay, great.
Okay. Uh, so we're good on the MMA action plan. We did the Warren and Finance, special town meeting timeline, we got that. Acton Public Library, CROCC Fest, I didn't see that one. Did you see that one?
I think she mentioned that when she was going through her.
Okay, so we're good on that. October eighth, time off request. She didn't hit us with that. That must be for herself. Oh, she's probably going to...
Ken's got one in there in the pile somewhere.
Yeah, it was not one for Jen. She must be taking some time off that day, so we can ask her about that afterwards. And Sand and Salt bid, she did that. Alright, resignation. From Stephen Casey, "Hi Jennifer, please accept this as my resignation from the Board of Appeals and the Policy Committee effective ten one fifteen. It has been a pleasure to serve the town in those two capacities. The leaders of both should be proud of themselves. Both of them do an excellent job." Steve Casey.
Make a motion, we accept it with regret.
Second.
All in favor? They did a great job on the policy committee. They got every one of those policies up to date and it's gonna be a big loss.
They're, they're moving out of town, correct?
Oh, I didn't know that.
I think that's... Pardon?
Florida.
Florida, okay.
Oh, they've been going to Florida every winter, so they're gonna move down here right now? That's too bad. They've been, both of them have been great in the town. Alrighty.
He was also back along on the, well, Bobby just got off the fire department. He was on the department.
By RAN EMS.
Yeah, and when, when I was chief over there, he was the training officer on the EMS side and did a terrific job, so. He'll be missed.
Absolutely. Alright, so, public hearing is on tonight at six o'clock for the general assistance ordinance, appendices A through D. Anybody have anything else? I do not. Larissa?
Yes, so, um, earlier this year I had asked Jennifer in a freedom of access request for all of the emails pertaining to the Warren and Finance Committee, and one that was from this summer, prior to me starting my term on the committee, I remembered regarding, I think at the time, the Select Board and the Warren and Finance Committee were having a disagreement about an article, and the Select Board asked MMA if, and this I'm quoting, if, um, oh, I've got, oh, I think we've messed up. Do you have two from Jennifer, or do you have one from Becky Seal?
I have one from Becky Seal.
I don't have the one from Jennifer, but basically the question that was sent to MMA was, does the, the, does the Select Board have the authority to send a warrant to town meeting without approval or without a recommendation from the Warren and Finance Committee? And Becky Seal says that, quote, "The Select Board has statutory authority pursuant to thirty A MRSA Sections two five one two one and two five two three to call a town meeting and determine what warrant articles will be included in the warrant calling the town meeting. The town meeting has imposed some additional requirements regarding the warrant preparation and approval process through the adoption of the Warren and Finance Committee ordinance. How much time the Select Board must give the committee to make a recommendation under the ordinance is the question. I think after a point, the Board can take the position that the committee's indecision amounts to a recommendation against adoption of an article. Whether that point has been reached is a factual judgment." So my interpretation of what Becky is saying is that because town meeting passed a warrant Finance Committee article, warrant, um, ordinance that says that we shall make the recommendation, that as long as we are not acting unduly in dragging our feet and refusing to do so, that that recommendation is necessary for the warrant to be posted. I would like to be very clear, we would love to make a recommendation. I know that there are Warren and Finance Committee members that have been very actively involved in the Little Red Schoolhouse and are certainly not going to want to avoid making that recommendation. I just need more than three days to pull them together. And so if there is a way that we could, you know, not be seen, seen as combative, not be seen that we don't want to do our jobs, but simply can be respectful that we were not foreseeing this and that people have left to take autumn vacations, and I, I just can't get you a recommendation by the twentieth.
Okay, thank you.
One quick question, Larissa. Is that also gonna pertain to fire rescue?
I believe so, because our understanding was that you guys had a meeting on the sixth, and again, we just, we knew that the warrant had to be signed and posted ten days prior to the town meeting, which meant that that had to happen by October tenth, and if you guys had your meeting on the sixth, we just, we kind of predicted that there would be, that would only give you guys a couple of days to get that draft finalized, and we weren't under the impression that you had a final draft that just needed final approval of your group, but that the meeting on the sixth was to actually create that final draft. So it was, it really was our honest expectation that the town would simply be having a second special town meeting to address the two items that weren't quite ready yet for the October twentieth date.
Okay, 'cause we really gotta get the fire rescue one put to bed. We got a meeting coming up next Tuesday that should finalize that. Tom Gore's been on the committee, brought everything in that you folks had, had questions on. He's happy that everything has been...
Yeah, I don't foresee any problems. It's, the only problem I foresee is simply a physical proximity problem. I don't think that, I mean, I don't know about the Little Red Schoolhouse. That one, I can see people on the committee wanting a little bit more time, and I think that it is reasonable to, since we are being asked as an advisory board to advise the townspeople on a course of action, I think it's reasonable to allow us to have at least a week, if not two, to come up with, you know, questions that we might ourselves have, that we then find answers for before we make a recommendation. So even if I could physically get the board members together in time to, I, I just can't see them being willing to make a recommendation, even if I got them into the, on Monday evening, if they were willing to drive back from their vacations to do so, I just, I think that there are going to be questions and they're going to want answers to those questions prior to being willing to make a recommendation. So if, if it's possible to, you know, just be respectful of that and know that we are not trying to be combative, we are not trying to be, um, uh, you know, cog in the works. We are, uh, not a cog, rather a stick in the, you know, we are just trying to do our jobs, and that's not enough time for us to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Dick Neal here. Would it be possible to push the town meeting, what, schedule for the twentieth, put it off at least?
No, because the zoning ordinance is, the town meeting has to be in a certain amount of days from the public hearing, so we would have to go through everything all over again with the ones that they've already voted on.
I was just asking.
Yeah, with the ones they've already voted on.
Everybody feels cramped here on, on time and everything.
Yeah.
I didn't know if we could just move it off a week, you know?
No, because it wouldn't go with the, with the public hearing for the zoning change for the one where, where we got the competing ones and everything else. We'd have to start all over again and, um...
The, the other thing I was gonna ask you, uh, I've made a to-do, things to-do list on the fire rescue.
For the, for the fire department?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got the email, thank you.
I was gonna say, if anybody, Michelle's already emailed me some questions and whatnot, and, but if, I, I just think if we make that list, then we all got the same list and we can see what needs to be done.
Yeah, the one thing that I saw that she wrote back to you on was the stocks. As far as the lawyers are concerned, both the lawyers for the ambulance and for the town, that's gonna be sold before we take...
Yeah.
Everything over. We don't, we can't have stock.
Yeah, no, we, we'll figure, um...
Yeah, that's already, that's already been figured in.
Be sure to make sure.
That's already been figured into the plan.
Whether there are any conditions on it, okay?
Yeah, that's already been figured into the plan between the two attorneys, the attorney for the Ambulance Association and attorney for the town. They've already figured all that. All that documentation has already been typed up and ready to go, so that's, but, you know, the town's not allowed to invest money in stock, so. And I think it's just a mutual fund, isn't it?
I think it is, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's easy to invest up.
Yeah, so it's easy, it's, you sell it for that.
Send the check in.
It's usually a dollar a share, so you just, all the money's there.
Right, you know, it just means cash in, you know?
Yeah, and they're gonna do that bef, and then turn the cash over to the town.
And then turn around, turn the check over to the...
Yeah. I believe the secretary, was it Secretary of State letter?
What's that?
Was it a Secretary of State letter you were looking for?
No, not really.
You had something written in there as far as from somebody at the state level. That I think has already been done.
Yeah.
So several things on that list have been done.
Some of those things, we, we can just cross off.
Right, yeah, but, yeah, several of those have all, on that list was all done, so.
But if somebody's got something that they know that everybody else isn't, you know, privy to, then all of a sudden...
Yeah.
We wait for another meeting, then somebody raises a question and, oh, well, we're back. So let's get all the questions out there and make sure somebody's working on them, you know?